Do you have a special town meeting, Mark? I have issued by the selectmen, I want to speak. I'm clerk, I need your call for meeting in the constable's room.
Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Worcester S.S., to give the constables of the town of Earlton and the county of Worcester. Creedence, in the name of Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of said town, called by the go in elections and in town affairs, to meet at the Earlton Memorial School in St. Earlton on Wednesday, the 26th day of June, 2013, next at seven thirty o'clock with easy, then in the following hours on immigration and to. And you are directed to serve this warrant by posting up attached copies thereof, as proposed by the town in said town, fourteen days at least, before the time and place of meeting as before said. Here I fail not and make due return of this warrant, with your doing to get on to the town clerk, at the time and place of meeting as before said, given under our terms this third day of June in the year of our laws, 2013. Board of selection, Julie Kooman Chairman, Thomas Andrew Royce Chairman, Walter Victor Clerk. Let through copy test, Robert V. Williams, Constable, Worcester S.S. Pursuant to the within warrant, I have notified and warned the inhabitants of the town of Earlton by posting up attached copies thereof at the town hall, the town offices and the post office, twenty days before the time of holding said meeting as within directed. Robert V. Williams, Constable, June 6th, 2013.
And we will proceed to article one. See if the town will vote for amendment to the development agreement dated May 14th, 2008, between Highland Commons Associates LLC and the town of Earlton, substantially in the form attached to warrant for this meeting. Thomas Andrew, selectman?
Mr. Moderator, I move to authorize the board of selection to execute the amendment to the payment schedule of the development agreement.
Close up the microphone, Mark.
Development agreement dated May 14th, 2008, between Highland Commons LLC and the town of Earlton, as presented in the special town meeting, including the following corrections to the draft circulated with the warrant of said meeting. In section two, each reference to public safety services payment is changed to be mitigation payments. And in section three, the reference to sections shall refer to sections one and two. And we do have available, we're handing out another copy that has marked and read those changes.
Motion is made to second it. To authorize the board of selectmen to execute the amendment to the payment schedule of the development agreement dated May 14th, 2008, between Highland Commons LLC and the town of Earlton, as presented in the special town meeting, including the following corrections to the draft circulated with the warrant for said meeting. In section two, each reference to the public safety services payment is changed to be mitigation payments. In section three, the reference to sections shall refer to sections one and two. And you have that, all of that shows up on your copy that you will pass this evening, with the changes shown and read. Thomas, you want to speak to it, please?
Actually, I'm going to ask the representative of Highland Commons LLC to come forward and speak.
Thank you, Thomas. Uh, Gideon Jen Hayes with Self-Base Companies. Uh, we are partners with Betterston Development in Highland Commons Shopping Center. Uh, first of all, thank everybody for coming out tonight. Appreciate your civic mindness. Appreciate your civic mindness and being here. Uh, first of all, let me give you a synopsis. I'm sure some of you have been up to the site recently with the opening of Market Basket in the last few weeks. Uh, currently, we have Lowe's, which has been open for several years, Market Basket, which opened within the last few weeks. Um, adjacent to Market Basket, we have a lease signed with TJ Maxx, a 24,000 square foot building, that's under construction. TJ Maxx should open probably in March of 2014. The building that is adjacent or south of TJ Maxx is about 40,000 square feet. It is what we consider a small shop space. At this point, we don't have any leases on it, but we're in the process of talking to smaller tenants. Um, we typically be in the 2,000 to 10,000 square foot range that would occupy that building. We'd divide it up way into between five and 15 different size, smaller tenants. In addition, BJ's also has been open for a couple of years. Um, and we recently announced, a couple of weeks ago, that we signed a lease for 92,000 square feet with Cabela's, which is a national outdoor sporting goods, hunting and camping retailer, which we're very excited about. Uh, the history of why we're here tonight goes back several years when we initially negotiated development agreement. As I can, everyone knows, we've been at this project for at least six or eight years. And when that was originally negotiated, uh, the economy was in a different state. We anticipated fairly comfortably that the entire 90,000 square feet project um, would be leased and initially built at one time. With the downturn in the economy in '08, um, a lot of retailers basically ceased expanding. And those that were expanding were doing so at rental rates that didn't make any sense for us to build a warrant. So, we approached the town at that time um, with a, with several variations from the development agreement, which we felt would be helpful to us, um, in allowing the project to be built out in a phased manner, as opposed to all at once. Um, what you see here tonight is a combination of that negotiation. And in layman's terms, what it allows us to do is to pay the mitigation and public safety fees to the town on a pro-rata basis as buildings were built out. Initially, we were intending to pay all the mitigation fees and the public safety fees, 100% at the point where 150,000 square feet space was built in the project on the Earlton side. Um, currently, we have about 70,000 square feet built, um, which is part of BJ's building that's in Earlton. Uh, and then currently under construction, we have the TJ Maxx, 24,000 square feet, and the 40,000 square feet of shop space that's adjacent to it. So, we have about 130,000 square feet. So, under the existing agreement, at this point in time, you would not be paying anything in terms of mitigation or public safety fees. Under the revised agreement, we will pay beginning this fiscal year, which I believe ends within the next couple of days. But we will, if this is approved tonight, within the next few weeks, we will provide the town with both our pro-rata mitigation payment and payment under the BJ's, uh, which I think the public safety payment is Thomas plus bill, 30,000 dollars, probably around that there, 75, 80?
75 percent, but...
Yeah, but 70,000 times about 35, or something like that, so, yeah. Uh, and we would, uh, we'd also pay a portion of mitigation payments. Uh, we would, we would pay that next year, every year following in terms of public safety fees. And, uh, uh, and it allows us to basically execute leases, or lease with Cabela's and subject to basically having these modifications to development agreements. This allows us to basically pay on a pro-rata basis. Otherwise, we would have to be paying the entire amount of public safety fee and mitigation fees, which would cause us not to basically start construction in any buildings until we get a substantial portion of the roughly 50,000 square feet on the Earlton side leased. Um, this allows us to build on a phased basis and allows the town to collect money, um, in an earlier phase, in an earlier timeframe than they normally would because construction would start sooner. Um, and I think that's, uh, hopefully a reasonable explanation as to what we're trying to accomplish here. I'm happy to answer any questions if anybody has anything with regard to either project or the development agreement. Yes, sir?
Would, would there be any commitment on your part to still...
Would you please come forward in the darkroom, Mike?
No.
And tell people who you are, who you're serving.
My name is Tom Perdell, I live on Ball Hill Road. Um, is there anything about your party still built out before now? Right, and it sounds like there's a certain amount of expecting once it's all built out.
And don't try to get in touch with him, so he'll...
So, I'm sure there's an expectation... Hello? Is there any commitment on your part to build out the rest of the space within a certain amount of time? So, we're getting presumably a smaller amount in these fees because there's less real estate built out at this point. But is there's any commitment that you will still build out the full amount that was in the original agreement?
Then, yeah, if, if, if we haven't reached the full build out, um, with, um, within five years, uh, the entire amount that is okay set. Anybody else?
If you would stay maybe, just in case we get something tomorrow. Finance committee comment? Finance committee has supported this agreement 40. Are the brothers that wish to speak? There are none, I'll ask you to vote. The motion is to authorize the board of selectmen to execute the amendment to the payment schedule of the development agreement dated May 14th, 19, uh, 2008, between Highland Commons LLC and the town of Earlton, as presented to the special town meeting, including the following corrections to the draft circulated with the warrant for said meeting. In section two, each reference to public safety services payment is changed to be mitigation payments. In section three, the reference to sections shall refer to sections one and two. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no.
No.
Motion carries the affirmative. Article two. To see if the town will vote to modify the development agreement dated May 14th, 2008, binding between Highland Commons Associate LLC and the town of Earlton, represented by replacing the current wording under section 15, as shown in the warrant. Mr. Andrew?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the special town meeting directs the board of selectmen to further amend the development agreement dated May 14th, 2008, between Highland Commons LLC and the town of Earlton, that the public safety service payments and the municipal impact mitigation payments shall be appropriated and spent through the annual budget process in an amending system with applicable state law, including DOR regulations and other administrative rulings. And to the board of selectmen, be further directed to work in consultation with town council, town treasurer, town accountant, and a representative of FinCon in determining the appropriate terms of the amendment.
Motion is made to second it. That the special town meeting directs the board of selectmen to further amend the development agreement dated May 14th, 2008, between Highland Commons LLC and the town of Earlton, so that public safety service payments and municipal impact mitigation payments shall be appropriated and spent through the annual budget process and in an amending system with applicable state law, including DOL regulations and other administrative rulings. And the board of selectmen be further directed to work in consultation with town council. Town treasurer, town accountant, and representative of FinCon in determining the appropriate terms of the amendment. Mr. Andrew?
Uh, yes, this is a technical change to the development agreement that is required by the evolution of state law and Department of Revenue rulings. The way the current development agreement is worded, uh, the monies that we're talking about, the public safety monies, uh, the capital impact and the, uh, other mitigation payments are treated as a gift. And that means that, uh, they are put into account and they can be spent at the discretion of the board of selectmen. And the board of selectmen had indicated at the time that this would pass the intention of the, the board to put, use their discretion to put this through the, the budget process. Uh, but interim rulings by the Department of Revenue indicate that they don't favor the idea of these kind of payments coming in as a gift and as the expression of the selection. Uh, so therefore, we need to make some modifications to this. Uh, make some modifications that will preserve the character of these funds as coming in to support the particular services and to be spent in particular purposes. Uh, and unfortunately, it's not even, it's, it's, there isn't an easy answer as to how to do this. There isn't a particular, uh, uh, section of, uh, the, the DOR, uh, regulations or the state law that tells us easily how to do this. So, we need to, you know, work with the groups that, uh, are mentioned here. We need to work with town council, uh, in order to amend the agreement. So, we bring it in line with, uh, with state laws as, as first.
Is the finance committee in a common sense? The finance committee is also in favor of this, but that's what I call 40. Are the brothers that wish to speak? Hearing none, I will ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion carries the affirmative. Article three. See if the town will vote to raise appropriate borrow or transfer from available funds with a sum of $35,000 for the purchase of a new police cruiser to replace the 2008 Ford Crown Victoria police sedan. I take any action tomorrow to... Selectmen, move on?
I move to transfer the sum of $35,000 from free cash for the purchase of the new police cruiser to replace the 2008 Ford Crown Victoria police sedan. Said sum to be expended by the board of selectmen.
Motion is made to appropriate, uh, to transfer this $35,000 for free cash. Uh, Judy, do you want to speak to it?
This motion would buy a new police cruiser and replace the 2008 Ford Crown Victoria, which may no longer be needed.
Finance committee comment?
Finance committee has, uh, supported this.
So, you got it?
FinCon is in our space, though.
Finance committee, your comments? Are the brothers that wish to speak to the motion?
Bill to Chief, plus the street. Um, I saved a call there, similar to a time meeting a few weeks ago. And at that time, no one, um, kind of gave a justification for it or spoke for it well, in a positive. And there is a detractor, and I guess that there have been other plans previously we were following, which we seem to have deviated from. So, I'd like to know from the selectmen, what's changed in the past seven weeks that the town should reconsider this proposal?
Judy? Article nine, who is John Dunn?
From what I know, talking with Chief Rowe, um, this cruiser article is to replace an existing car and add an addition to the fleet, another car. If this car passes, this car will go down the chief's car, it's another car. And I think this car is over 10 years old. Last year, we skipped over the cruiser article. They were giving money in a separate article for 2013 to refurbish a car, not all of them, to refurbish a car, which actually, 2007 has more miles than this 2008. So, if we don't pass this article, it's going to go two years out on another car. And it's basically, I appreciate, you know, people support this article, and I don't get too far behind the tires and everything else. So, that's some reason why...
Are the brothers that wish to speak? Dennis Ferber?
Dennis Ferber, 31, Long Island Street, town treasurer, chairman of capital planning, F.C. group. Um, basically, is the last meeting, we brought the law. You know, and get up to defend this. It's the basic hierarchy of capital plan. And it's something that the plan was started with, I don't know if you remember wheels.
A little bit longer, please.
The majority, the vast majority of the people involved in the capital plan is supporting this hierarchy.
Brothers?
Aye. It's affordable because we still have enough free cash. And if it's exactly in the formula that we work with every year, to preserve some free cash and continue with capital payments.
If there are no others, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion carries the affirmative. Article four, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate borrow or transfer from available funds with a sum of $1,500 to equip, repair, and refurbish a Ford Crown Victoria marked police vehicle to be used as a command vehicle for fire department or take any action relative there to, um, Chief LePierre.
Bruce, I have 124, plus the street. Mr. Moderator, I move to transfer the sum of $1,500 from free cash to equip, repair, and refurbish a 2008 Ford Crown Victoria marked police vehicle to be used as a command vehicle for fire department, replacing the 2005 Ford Crown Victoria. Said sum to be expended by the board of selectmen.
Motion made to second it to transfer the sum of $1,500 from free cash for this purpose. Uh, Bruce, do I speak to it?
This is, uh, historically the means by which, uh, I take something that's raised to grave guard against something that will last a couple of years. Uh, obviously, I'm not using it in the intensity that police cruiser, police cruiser is used. So, it can, uh, you know, last a few more years under my care as opposed to, uh, being beaten ship by ship by the police department. Um, I don't mean that offensively. They, they certainly have a lot more run hours upon the minimum time they have on it, let's put it that way. Um, in the past, I've been fortunate to have someone on the department that was able to save some funds in terms of the transfer because I had all the radio work done in house. So, the $1,500 is to make it one color scheme instead of a checkerboard. And, uh, I usually choose white and black to pick on the price of paint. Um, I tear off the decals myself and get someone to donate the cost that I paid, the cost of the decals I put on for nothing. And then the rest of it will be used to, uh, do a checkup on it and transfer the radio board. Which right now, in the vehicle, there are, uh, four, um, radios, four panels that the fire department operates on, as well as a repeater, which allows us to boost the signal if we were further away and needed to communicate with dispatch.
Bruce, what's the age of the company vehicle?
It's in the, in the motions, it's a 2005. And, uh, at the very least, I know it needs a starter and, uh, which is going slowly, which is good about the Crown fix. They kind of go slowly, John, I'll tell you, you can tell when it's starting to go. And, uh, the front fenders, uh, rustle from the inside out of this one.
Finance committee comment?
The finance committee would like to vote.
Are the brothers that wish to speak to the motion? Hearing none, I'll ask you to vote. The motion is to transfer the sum of $1,500 from free cash to equip, repair, and refurbish a 2008 Ford Crown Victoria marked police vehicle to be used as a command vehicle for the fire department, replacing the 2005 Ford Crown Victoria. Said sum to be expended by the board of selectmen. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries the affirmative. Article five, to see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of $57,790.24 from the storage arm insurance revolving account to replace the collapsed equipment storage building which was located on South Common. In any related expenses, I take any action relative there to... I receive the term. Mr. Keith Clum?
Keith Clum, 79, Long Island Street. Mr. Moderator, I move to appropriate the sum of $57,790.24 from the storage arm insurance revolving account to replace the collapsed equipment storage building which was located on South Common. In any related expenses, said sum to be expended by the board of selectmen.
The motion is made to second it to appropriate the sum of $57,790.24 and the rest of it is basically the same with the, uh, money to be expended by the board of selectmen. Mr. Clummer?
Yeah, a couple of years ago, we've been, the spillstone across from one of our shelters, and held an awful lot of expensive equipment. Um, this is money right now strapped in the insurance revolving account. What I'm asking for is to get it released so that the selectmen can, at, at some time, they can tell me where they want, what, what they want me to build. Uh, but this will just release it so that I have the utmost meaning to use this sum, some of this money to, uh, to cover up our thousands of dollars of equipment that is inside the last couple of years.
Finance committee comment?
Finance committee recommends to vote.
Are the brothers that wish to speak to the motion? Hearing nothing, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
Motion carries the affirmative. Article six, see if the town will vote to raise appropriate borrow or transfer from available funds with a sum of $27,500 for roof repairs of the town offices building. 23 Lindens Street, they take any action relative there to... Mr. Clummer?
Keith Clum, 14, facilities manager.
And it won since the last time? Yeah. For 79, please?
I live on the corner of... I moved, I moved to transfer this for $27,500 from free cash for roof repairs in the town office building, 23 Lindens Street. Said sum to be expended by the board of selectmen.
It's $27,500 from free cash. It's twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollars from free cash.
It's free cash, from free cash. Uh, the roof is leaking, making a mess up there. I did a little research, the roof has been on since nineteen ninety-three. It has a twenty-year membrane warranty that's, is up November seventeenth. We're under that. Unfortunately, the membrane, I've had, I've researched, the membrane is in really, really good shape for the twenty years. The unfortunate thing is, every seam, every joint, everything around all the air dishes and everything, that product is given away. So all of those things are leaking. It is highly recommended by the people that installed it twenty years ago, that if they go and seal all the joints, put it back together with a new product, by the way, he sees no reason why it won't get at least another five years out of the roof. And I also had a, a quote come in to re-roof the whole thing, that's around a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, which if we can save this for twenty-seven, for another five years, they can put it into the capital plan, and we'll come up with a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars within five, five years from now.
Finance committee comment?
Finance committee recommend to vote.
Are the brothers supposed to speak? Because nobody else wants to figure out how to fix the roof. The motion is to transfer the sum of twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollars from free cash for roof repairs at the town office's building, twenty-three Linnest Street, said sum to be expended by the board of selectmen. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. Article seven, to see if the town will vote to authorize the tax, town tax title custodian to transfer a certain four acre parcel of tax title land located off the westerly side of Crosby Road and shown on Assessors Map Six as block five, block zero, from the Care, Custody, and Management of Tax Title Custodian to the Care, Custody, and Control of the Berlin Conservation Commission for conservation purposes pursuant to General Office Chapter Forty, Section Eight C, and Article Ninety-seven to the amendments of the Massachusetts Constitution, and to authorize the town treasurer tax title custodian to execute in accordance with transferring said parcel to the Conservation Commission for conservation purposes, or take any action relative thereto. The motion, Article seven. Article one, Troyford Meniscus.
No, that's not the custody.
Oh, true, the tax title custodian, meniscus. Just the hat.
I got my titles and the police have cruisers.
I move to authorize tax title custodian to transfer a certain four acre parcel of tax title land located off the westerly side of Crosby Road and showing the Assessors Map Six as block five, block zero, from the Care, Custody, and Management of the Tax Title Custodian to the Care, Custody, and Control of the Berlin Conservation Commission for conservation purposes pursuant to GLC Forty, Eight C, and Article Ninety-seven to the amendments of the Massachusetts Constitution to authorize the town treasurer tax title custodian to execute in accordance with transferring said parcel to the Conservation Commission for conservation purposes.
The motion is made in seconded, it's in the, basically exactly in the form of the article, so I'm not agreed with him right now. But you want to speak to it, Dan?
Yeah, I'm going to speak to the article, and then Mr. Perry will hopefully get up and speak as well. If you follow the lane, or come to report, you know that the policy I currently have in place as a tax title custodian is to keep them as town land with a little bit of bending towards keeping them for conservation purposes, but because of the status, allowing us to use them for other town uses. Those uses could include selling them for money, keeping them as town property. And if, and it happens in time to time, it's, it's, you'll like it when you have it, possibly using, using some of the land in negotiating with some development that's going on. And I know there's been a few times where Walter and I disagreed because he liked to have a lot of it. But this particular property will be toward it, and he showed me what it would do to Berlin, and he can get more specific. It's a small piece of property, it's landlocked, I don't recall the amount of value, but it's very small, it might have been way below value. And it will complete a chain, well, actually, we have one more sister lot, that's the name of something, that will allow you to block pretty much around all Berlin legally on conservation or right-of-way property. So this isn't just, I'm saying we really like to have it on the green space. This one really makes sense to turn over to conservation. And we're doing it, you know, legally, the way the state helps us, we have to do it, so.
Alt. eight, two twelve South Street. I'm reluctant to say anything, the soil would then say, I couldn't say it any better, this is a key little piece that would, without it, we would lose the best opportunity to link the center of town with walking and hiking trails up into miles of hiking trails in the Berlin woods, in Mount Hysgiv area. And so it's very important that we, for the purpose of trails and conservation, that this piece be protected. Good job.
This piece of property, a lot, a lot of conservation land, right? It's about four acres of land, and it's landlocked all of it. Finance committee have a comment on it? No? Is anyone else who is supposed to speak? If not, I'll ask you to vote. The motion is still in the same form as the article. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. The town clerk wants everybody to remember that dog licenses were in that season when the fines go up. July one, it's twenty-five dollar fee, uh, uh, fine, when you have to pay for it, because you're what, more? I'll ask if people will help us a little bit with the chairs after the meeting. If people help us a little bit with the chairs, we appreciate it, it's great. Here's the motion, Mr. Tom. Selectmen, do the.
Alt. eight, two twelve South Street. I move to dissolve this meeting.
Once we make the seconded, dissolve the meeting, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no, the meeting is dissolved.